Let's call this January 22 meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission to order. First item on the agenda is public comment. Is there any member of the public here who would like to speak to the Planning Commission on something other than the E-Web master plan or the AT&amp;T reman? Seeing none, Commissioner Randall, do you want to take three minutes and do a slideshow about your new brand idea?
I should have a full PowerPoint.
We'll schedule a separate meeting.
All right, then we'll move on to Agenda Item Two, the E-Web Riverfront Master Plan Work Session. Steve?
Thanks. So before we start with the presentation, I just want to say a few words just about the process that you'll be going through with this item and then a little bit about the Planning Commission's role as well, just to get you a little more familiar. Today's work session is really to help get all of you familiar as much as we can with the master plan and the various components that are going forward through the land use application process. Procedurally, one of the important things to keep in mind is this is a quasi-judicial process that we will be going through, so most of you are familiar with what that means. So things like ex parte contacts and so forth are important things to keep in mind. And frankly, that's one of the reasons why this item hasn't been before you before is that we knew from the early work on this project that it would at some point be coming forward through a set of formal land use applications, and that's what we have for us at this point. So if you've been yearning for updates or other information about the work to this date, that's one of the reasons why we couldn't bring it to you, is to keep that process pure in essence. So now we've entered kind of the more formal review role that's just been beginning as of really today with this work session, and we'll kind of go into that normal mode that we do in terms of hearing processes. One of the things that's important, though, to keep in mind is this has been a little bit unique compared to the typical kind of land use applications or development requests that you sometimes see. The City Council, for instance, in this case, has had a unique role in that they have been involved kind of at the front end of this process. They obviously will be the decision makers ultimately on the set of land use applications that come forward, but they also had a role at the very beginning of this process, and a lot of that comes from our downtown plan policies. And Nan will give us a little bit of understanding of what that means in a second, but in essence, they along with the E-Web Board helped to form a citizen advisory committee that helped to develop the vision and in essence, a master plan for the riverfront property. And that has had its own robust process that has already transpired. And now before you is basically the land use applications that are necessary to carry out that vision that's been developed through this other separate process. And that kind of gets to where we wanted to say a few words about your role in the review of this. As you can see in the binders you have, there's a lot of information with the various components that are necessary that need action by you. Your role in a formal sense is to make a recommendation to the City Council on the set of land use applications, amendments in essence to various plans and codes that we have. But within that, I think where the Council's going to be looking to the Planning Commission more specifically is to really help them have a better sense of the various tools that come with this, in essence, looking carefully at the various implementation tools that carry out that vision. You see your role being kind of important in that respect. So not as much emphasis necessarily on the vision itself because that's gone through its own process to arrive to you today, but more to look at how that vision is being carried out through all the various land use actions that you need to review. We'll talk a little bit more about that in the presentation, and you may have some questions to understand that a little bit better following that, but that's something that we want to try to emphasize because we think through that not only will that make it more manageable for you and your role in this review process, but it's also, I think, an area that the Council will look to you for your expertise on. They're not going to have the same opportunity to wade as deep into code provisions and implementing tools as you will, so that's the part we think you'll be most important in helping them on when they eventually get the formal recommendation. So today, as I said, is a work session for the Commission to really get you oriented with the various pieces of the puzzle, so to speak, of the land use application package, and a chance for you to ask questions about that. Because we have a hearing that's coming up on February 5th and deliberations and discussion that will follow, today is not an opportunity to talk about the merits of the project. We'll have that opportunity later, but we want to have you hold those kind of comments until you've heard from the public on this. So today is more really to get you oriented to the various pieces of the land use application puzzle and to clarify those as much as we can today. The presentation's a little longer than we normally do because there's a lot to cover, and so it'll probably run roughly a half hour or so, so we'd ask you to hold your questions till the end of that, and we should have plenty of time still to...
So Steve, just so we're all on kind of the same sheet of music here, what in essence we have is a redevelopment proposal by E-Web. Similar to what we did with Walnut Station, we're developing a new zoning code to implement that plan, but what's different is that since E-Web is a single entity owner, that code development process is quasi-judicial instead of legislative.
That's correct. And to go a step further, Walnut was a city-initiated project. The city was the applicant for that themselves. We were developing the plan, whereas here we have an outside entity, albeit a public agency, but no different really in our eyes than a private entity. So in some ways, it's akin for some of you who went through the Rexius project, it's a good analogy in terms of the applicant city role. You have a private entity who's proposed a redevelopment plan for you with a bunch of tools that come with that to say, here's how that will be realized. Your job is to look at that toolkit basically to determine whether it carries out the...
Instead of evaluating the proposal against existing code, we're developing a new code to implement the proposal.
Correct.
Well, it looks like we'll be boldly going where no Planning Commission has gone before.
You've gone there in different ways, but a little different here.
Okay, all right. So who's up? Gabe Bernann.
I'll start. So today we do have a number of PowerPoint slides to help walk us through the master plan process and really, I think, cover some of the basic elements of the concept and the proposal. And really, I hope that we can start to build the Commission's understanding as we move forward toward a public hearing in a couple of weeks and then deliberations from there. Before I get started, though, I did want to mention all the hard work on the part of E-Web staff and their consultant team, and really, you know, it's been a heavy lift to get to this point, and of course, we're just starting the hearings process, the more formal aspect of the application process, so...
Quite a bit of citizen involvement already, too.
There has been, and Nan will touch on that a little bit more, but I also want to thank the team. They've been very generous in allowing us to use some of the slides today, so we'll see that as we move through the presentation. So today we're going to cover several, I think, key aspects of the plan. Nan's going to talk a little bit about the history of the master plan. We'll talk about some of the master plan components. We'll also go through a sort of summary of multiple applications that are involved here. We'll talk about, and I think one of the key or critical pieces of this is the form-based code that E-Web's proposing. Another very important part of the project is the riverfront park, and that's received a lot of that public attention through their process to date. Then we'll recap with a little bit about next steps. But to begin, I'd like to turn it over to Nan to talk a little bit about the master plan history.
Great, thank you. Slide. Our community has long desired a connection from downtown to the river. It is a part of who we are, it is part of our identity, and is definitely a part of our vision for the future. We have 13 miles of riverfront, and I apologize, it's hard to see this river. Do we want to kill the lights for just a sec so we can see the... Thank you. We have 13 miles of riverfront, including both sides of the river. The portion closest to downtown is, you can see a little bit in red, right along the river. It's the E-Web riverfront from Fourth to Eighth. It's just about a quarter mile. It's not a big area, but it's something important enough that we really need to get right. What we're trying to do as staff, as planning commissioners, as a community, is to move from vision to concept to plan to implementation. And the first step in the implementation is to create the regulatory framework, and that's the task we're really beginning today. So I'm going to give you a little bit of context. The idea for, actually, go back to the other slide for just a sec. The idea for a downtown riverfront, and I apologize, you can see that the context of downtown, it's probably hard to make out the little purple boundary of downtown. This is an older slide, which makes it easier to see the lack of development in the courthouse area, but you can see right along the river, the E-Web property that we're talking about. Gabe, if I need your, if I could use your pointer?
I don't have a pointer.
Okay, that's okay. The idea for a downtown riverfront was a key point in the 1984 Downtown Plan, was one of the strongest ideas coming out of the downtown vision in 2000. It was included as a main concept in the 2004 Downtown Plan. So about 1999, staff began a conversation with E-Web about the possibility of leaving the riverfront site and allowing redevelopment to occur. So I would have to say, this all sounds like it's taken a long time, but from a long-range planning position, this feels like we've just been moving along apace. So we worked very closely with E-Web staff and commissioners and planning commissioners and City Council to craft the process under which redevelopment could take place. We've had multiple design charrettes, major public workshops. It's really been a community-rich process. Okay, next slide. Here are the policies that were adopted into the Downtown Plan in 2004. They speak to the intent and the direction from City Council. First, to connect with the river. Second, to encourage E-Web to relocate. Third, to create a master plan that would need to be approved by City Council. And fourth, to facilitate development between downtown and the river. So those are the policies from the Downtown Plan that we have been working on significantly since the plan was adopted in 2004. Next. As part of the master plan, we developed, working closely with E-Web, and again, going through a large public process, to come up with what will end up being the criteria for the master plan. Now, these represent a value-based planning approach. These were included in the Downtown Plan and later codified in the land use code. First, to create a people place, to include variable setbacks based on the environment and based on habitat value, to include buildings that were respectful to the environment. I think that if we were writing this now, we would have said, we would have used the word "sustainable." In 2004, we used the words "variable setbacks" and "environmentally respectful." The fourth value statement, which is in fact a criterion, is to create a Eugene place, a place on the river that helps tell the story of our community. The community and Council agreed on these value statements as the criteria for the master plan. These have been codified. They take us in a different direction. It doesn't tell you exactly how far the setback needs to be, but it tells you really what the best outcome is that we're looking for. Next slide. So in December of 2007, City Council and E-Web entered into a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, to articulate the master planning process. We jointly agreed to have a nine-member community advisory team, or a CAT team, with some members selected by E-Web and some members selected by City Council, a consultant-led planning process, and a robust community engagement process. There were to be at least four large community meetings in addition to all the public CAT meetings and discussion. I can't emphasize enough how involved the community has been invited to be into this process. I'll show you one slide if you go to next. This is, just represents one meeting. It was actually to be held in a different location. They had to move it to the Hilton. They had over 300 people present just at this one meeting. So the master planning process was as inclusive as we could make it. Hundreds of community members attended the public workshops and had the opportunity to provide input into the process. And the master plan was shaped by this public input and by the technical information and research on the site. So this was a two-year process with many meetings. So in 2010, the draft master plan was presented to E-Web and was unanimously approved by the Board. Next slide. As you know, much has changed in this area, in this neighborhood, and much is continuing to change with the federal courthouse, the substantial transportation improvements, and next slide, the proposed Northwest Community Credit Union. Now you can have, this is a better view with the, you can see it outlined in yellow, the courthouse to the left, and then across the railroad tracks, the E-Web property, and then, of course, the river right there. The discussion of the master plan now is very timely. Next slide. So Council's direction throughout this process has been to be both visionary and practical, to create a master plan and then to facilitate development in this unique area of downtown. Today's discussion follows that direction. For the downtown riverfront, the process of creating the regulatory framework and determining the specific uses, density setbacks, that falls to the master planning process, which provides the specific details that will form the basis of the land use approvals for this important site. And Gabe will lead you through those details. Thank you.
So this slide helps to show some of the key features of the master plan. You can see the framework of proposed streets, the redevelopment blocks, the park, and it's just another example of the relationship of the site to its immediate surroundings. I think here it's also important to note the riverfront street that connects Fifth and Eighth avenues. Really, this is described in the master plan as a great loop, and it connects two of the, quote, "great streets" that are identified in the Downtown Plan. I think this just helps to show some of the basic building blocks of the master plan. This next illustration, this is actually an illustrative plan from the master plan, and I think it gives a little more detail of what we're really hoping to achieve with the policy framework. You can get a better sense of the building orientation, the framework of streets, enhanced and expanded green space along the river. And I think it's also important here to point your attention to the policies in the special area plan. These help to articulate the vision, and I'd encourage you all to read those in more detail. We'll talk a little bit later about design review and how those policies will also be used as approval criteria in design review for alternative concepts or projects that might not meet all the form-based standards. This next slide, here's a closer view of the site, and I think it's important to get a sense of, you know, some of the existing site conditions. You really get a sense of how fully paved the site is, and really, you know, it's served the utilities purposes for many years. On the left here, you can see the viaduct leading to Ferry Street Bridge, you know, the railroad along the south, and again, this edge along the river. Here you can really get a sense of how narrow that band of riparian area is along the bike So again, back to this illustration from the master plan. I think it really gives a good sort of visual representation of what we're hoping to achieve. So in terms of the process, we have a pretty hefty package of multiple land use applications, and I'll walk you through a little bit of that. Basically, to summarize, we have a metro plan amendment that will change the site primarily to mixed use. We have refinement plan amendments to the Downtown Plan and the riverfront park study, basically to remove some of the older policies and make way for the new plan. We're also adopting the specific area plan, which is really, I think, a condensed version of the conceptual master plan that E-Web developed, and it's really the underpinnings for the code that we'll talk about in more detail. So the package does also include a new special area zone. There are a variety of other code amendments that help to, as proposed, to sort of integrate it into the existing code. And the zone adoption and the actual zone change will establish what will be known as the Downtown Riverfront Special Area Zone. There's also a greenway permit involved, and the idea is that the greenway permit would be essentially effective so long as the zoning remains in place. I think it's also worth noting that this sort of concurrent process allows for, you know, an efficient approach to adoption. It also helps, I think, to gain an understanding of how all the parts fit together. So in terms of the concurrent process, we'll be moving forward toward a public hearing on February 5th and working with you through some deliberation meetings to create a recommendation to Council. And at that point, we'll also, I think, as we move forward, we'll hold several work sessions with Council to help build their understanding as well. And then there's a second public hearing before adoption of the package. So turning a minute to some of the more basic components here, this gives you an idea of what the existing plan designation is for the site. For the most part, it's heavy industrial. You also see there's an area here on the upper left that is designated for high-density residential and mixed use. There's some smaller areas of parks and open space. And then in the upper-left corner here, we also have the special Whittaker zoning, which is an existing mixed-use zone that will basically remain as-is because it works well with the master plan concept. So here, you see the proposed designation change, and what it does is change the site to predominantly mixed use. You can see some of the parks and open space areas that will remain here. The Whittaker area stays the same, and one of the things, while you note here, this parcel actually changed from parks and open space to mixed use, and that's, I think, really intended to reflect the existence of the North Building for the E-Web headquarters, which will obviously stay where it is. Getting a sense of the zoning here, you can see that the public land zone covers most of the site. There's also some areas, if I can get this, go back here. There are also some areas of heavy industrial. There's the special Whittaker zone. And really, that public land zone, I think, serves the utilities purposes well over the years, but for this concept, you might guess that the public land zoning, the heavy industrial designation, really just don't work well with the concept for mixed-use pedestrian-friendly development and protections along the river. So here you see that the majority of the site goes to the new special area zone, and I think it's also worth noting here that the site will retain its water resources overlay zoning. It's also entirely within the greenway, at least the portion north of the railroad tracks and east of the viaduct there, and so that's really what requires the Walamette Greenway permit for the project. So turning a minute to some of the key components of the form-based code, you know, and at the risk of oversimplifying here, you know, I would just sort of summarize by saying that form-based codes differ from traditional zoning in several respects. They're really less predicated on uses. They tend to use graphics to create a more user-friendly code, certainly much more than just plain code text. And hopefully, you'll see that as we go through some of the slides here to see how it works. The form-based code concept, you know, it incorporates urban design principles, and really, I think in general, it's just easier to administer. I'm sure, as some of you might remember, and I think we're involved with, Walnut Station was the first special area zone we implemented that used form-based principles, and US Proposed Code is really modeled after Walnut Station, I think, but with several important key differences that make the code tailored to the site and really respond to the master plan's intent. So it's really, it's customized zoning to try to implement that master plan concept. It's called a hybrid code because, you know, it exists within our traditional Chapter Nine code provisions, and it has to work with those other sections. So really, it sort of blends the old and the new, and as you review the code in more detail, I hope, hopefully, you'll see the reliance on existing standards in some cases and integration of the new provisions with other code sections. Some of the unique features in E-Web's Downtown Riverfront Zone are especially important and worth talking, walking you through, and here, here's just a summary of those key components we'll talk more about. We'll talk about use controls, urban design standards, adaptive reuse provisions, development setbacks, parks and open space, and then finally, the design review concept. So on the left here, you can see, this is another sort of general depiction of the master plan framework. The diagram on the right is really a translation into a code diagram of the regulating plan. It basically establishes two sub-districts. We have the mixed-use sub-district here, and then in green is the cultural landscape and open space sub-district. We'll pull this up, too. So we also have two overlay sub-districts, and in this area here, it has some use controls that help to facilitate the concept in the plan for what they call Restaurant Row. It restricts uses to entertainment and retail, and residential is only allowed above the ground floor. I think one of the, one of the neat features of this, too, is that in the standards, it requires either eco roofs or accessible rooftop space there adjacent to the park. In a couple of other areas here, you see what's called the, sort of, the people overlay along the south side of the New Riverfront Street and near the corner of High Street. And really, this sub-district is intended to allow for mixing of commercial and residential uses with the idea of creating a sort of Main Street concept with more retail and active street fronts. And I think it's also worth noting, office and institutional uses are only allowed above the ground floor. This overlay also requires at least one story of residential use, and except for Restaurant Row, the mixed-use areas generally require a minimum of three stories of development with residential above the second story. So in effect, this standard really acts as a minimum residential density requirement, which I think is a pretty key ingredient for really achieving the vision in the plan. Another, I think, important aspect of the use controls is really, you know, the way in which uses are addressed in this new code. We use a, rather than a line-item sort of attempt at identifying every possible use that we might encounter, which, you know, most typical zones in the Eugene code does. This really encourages more mixing by relying on a broad set of categories of use, things like retail service-oriented uses, residential uses, institutional uses, without getting into the finer details of trying to define every possible aspect or use. The focus here is on form and function, which really, I think, should lessen the concern about particular uses, but the code still prohibits certain uses, things like heavy industrial, vehicle service-oriented uses, no new cell towers, and no suburban-type single-family developments really allowed. So it has some of those traditional elements, but also, I think, takes it to another level as far as the sort of generous nature of the use list and facilitating mixed uses. It's also worth pointing out that the allowed uses in the park are really tailored to that specific concept, and they're really limited to parking open space uses. We'll talk about that a little bit more as I move through this. I think this slide helps to show, at least conceptually, how the, there are urban design guidelines from the plan that are incorporated into the code. And the hope is that, you know, this would make it simpler for anyone to understand sort of the... sort of the bulk and the height, the massing of buildings, orientation. It's just, it's visual, it's more user-friendly than a set of numeric standards that we might otherwise typically encounter in the code. So on the left is a sort of a three-dimensional diagram that helps to show some of the bulk and height standards. We also have, in some cases, a build-to line, which helps bring the building up to the street. We also have maximum-high standards for each sub-area. We have minimum-height standards, which, in most cases, as I mentioned, you know, we're looking at requiring three stories of development. In some areas, we also have a minimum first-floor height of 14 feet, which helps to, again, try to activate that street front, that first floor along the street. And for taller buildings, the code has a step-back requirement that really helps to diminish the bulk and the massing along the street and avoid sort of a canyon effect where we're pulling the buildings up closer to the street. Let me go back here and take a look. On the right, you get a view of the code diagrams. We have both cross-section and plan view, and this, I think, is showing the Restaurant Row on the left, some mixed-use buildings on the right, which would be to the south. And for each street section, we have this cross-section, which shows the sort of spatial relationship, shows wider sidewalks. And again, you know, here in plan view, you get a better idea of what it looks like. We have, you know, requirements for curb extensions, for crosswalks, elevated crosswalks, and high-contrast paving, things like that. We also have some green infrastructure elements built into the code to try to encourage storm water treatment, street trees, of course, and on-street parking along the streets. So here, we have a slide that helps to describe and show what we need to talk about, adaptive reuse. The code has special standards that are really designed to allow adaptive reuse of the existing buildings on the site without triggering expensive improvements. It allows alterations and changes of use and up to 30% expansion without triggering development standards for things like parking. On the left, you see a code diagram that regulates expansion of the steam plant. This is actually a representation of the steam plant, which shows, you know, the maximum potential addition if they were to build up. You also see the expansion, but only allowed away from the river. And again, there's a step-back here, which is shown in the code. And again, I think the visuals just really help to understand what we intend and really, for any future user, what's required potentially for redevelopment. So the existing buildings on the site, everything from the headquarters, the steam plant, the Mitchely's Building, and the operations warehouse, they're all allowed to use what the code describes as interim parking areas. So these surface parking lots are really, they'll remain available for infill development, and really, the idea is that over time, other new development would replace existing surface lots with more structures and on-street parking. So this slide helps to show one of the key features, which is the development setbacks. And on the left, you can see the boardwalk setbacks in the Restaurant Row area will create open space for seating toward the river, and it also creates some pass-through areas for pedestrian traffic and really to help maintain view corridors to the river. The Greenway setback is also another key feature that this code will implement for the site, and basically, it's about 100 feet back from the river, but also respecting the location of existing buildings there. So you can see where it sort of follows the edge of these buildings. But overall, we're talking about 100-foot setback for new buildings, other than park and open space uses that might occur in the park area. I think it's also worth noting here that you, you know, I showed you that slide with, you get a sense of the amount paved area up to the river, and really, that area is exempt from the water resource overlay standards where that paving encroaches to the river. And so, in a sense, what the proposed code does is expand the regulated area for riparian protections along the river within this Greenway setback. And while this slide doesn't really show it precisely, I think those arrows are roughly aligned with what's described in the plan as view corridors. So you really extend, you see where the streets sort of point toward the river, and the idea is to create a view corridor and sort of invite people that, you know, maybe walking along those streets to go to the park and really to be able to see the river from several key areas on the site. So perhaps one of the most important elements of the proposal is the riverfront park. E-Web's proposing about eight acres of park and open space, which is roughly almost a quarter of the site. There are a bunch of amenities and features that are required in the proposed code, and the park development's required to follow an extensive set of design guidelines that are in the specific area plan. And I won't show those on the slide here, but again, much like the policies, I encourage you to look really closely at those design guidelines, because those will serve as the approval criteria for park development. So just to cover a few of those, the, some of the amenities and the requirements for the park include regrading the site with a more gentle slope toward the river. There are requirements to restore the river's edge with native plantings, and to relocate the bike path and create new trails for access to key overlooks along the river. And you can see the asterisk here in several areas that show interpretive sites and potential overlooks. And again, if you look into the design guidelines, you'll get a better sense of what's required for those features. And again, I think it's worth reiterating that the proposal for the park has received a lot of attention through the public process to date. We've also had Parks and Open Space staff review the proposed code extensively to make sure it's feasible, that it includes some flexibility in later design and construction, and really, I think, to get an early evaluation of some of the cost implications. While specific funding for the park improvements hasn't been identified, I would say that the proposal, at least from a regulatory standpoint, would ensure that we have a publicly-accessible riverfront park as part of the proposed code and the master plan. So the zoning code would actually require that all park development be reviewed according to design review, and so I wanted to talk a little bit more about that. In terms of process, this is a key feature of the proposed code, something that we first implemented with the Walnut Station project. And really, you know, I think the idea is to allow some flexibility for alternative designs that might not otherwise meet the particular standards, but it still requires compliance with the intent of the plan through the adopted policies. It's intended to help strike a balance between flexibility and certainty as we might see redevelopment projects move forward. Approval depends on compliance with those policies I mentioned, as well as what you may be familiar with, the downtown adjustment approval criteria, basically to make sure that development through this alternative path is still consistent with the vision that was developed in the master plan. So in this way, I think the code provides flexibility, but won't allow development that's inconsistent with the concept. I like to think of it as sort of an equal-to or better-than provision, at least that's the idea. And I think one of the questions that I'd encourage the commission to look closer at as we go through this process and get into more detail is whether the code allows the right amount of flexibility and whether the approval criteria through those policies really give enough certainty that alternative designs will still be consistent with the So in terms of next steps, we do have a public hearing scheduled for February 5th, and then we'll hold deliberation meetings to help you all develop a recommendation to city council. After that, the process requires another public hearing before council takes final action, and we do expect a lot of testimony related to the interest, and if it seems appropriate, we might also recommend an open extended record period for public comment. Given the level of public interest and the complexity of this project, we do expect to hold additional meetings before actions taken at each level. We want to allow plenty of opportunity for stakeholder input and really to make sure that the planning commission and council have all the information they need to make a well-considered decision. I think, as Steve mentioned at the beginning, the planning commission could probably best assist staff and the council by focusing its expertise on implementing tools, really the proposed code standards and lending your expertise as to how those might be refined or changed perhaps, or supported in their current form in your recommendation to council. So with that, I'd like to open it up to questions and discussion. And I know there's a lot of content here for you all to digest, but I do have additional materials here in the special area plan and the proposed code if you need to get into that. And I think there are a number of members of the applicants team here. I'm sure they'd be happy to at least take down your questions and be ready to respond to those at the public hearing coming up.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so, excuse me, as we proceed, let me just remind us that it's a quasi-judicial hearing that we're heading into, so this is a work session, questions only to Gabe and Ann and Steve, rather than getting into any kind of discussion about the merits of any of the matters. So who'd like to begin? John and then Steve?
Yeah, just to clarify this, the public hearing, the planning commission will hold on February 5th, is just restricted to the proposed code?
No, no. In fact, let me go back to, if you're with me here as I retrace some of my steps, but really, it includes a multiple-application package. And this slide, I think, do this. So we're looking at a Metro Plan Amendment that essentially, I mean, at the risk of oversimplifying it, it changes the site to mixed use. We have a set of refinement plan amendments that clean up some old policy language. We have the actual adoption of the special area plan, and it's really a condensed version of the master plan for E-Web property. We're also adopting a new zone, the downtown riverfront special area zone. We're changing the zoning, and we're, at least, we're, their application package includes a Willamette Greenway permit as well. So it's a multiple-part application, and the public hearing really is an opportunity to look at any of those elements, and one of the key things for the commission to think about is, you know, and as the applicant's findings really, I think, address in detail is whether they meet the approval criteria, things like the statewide planning goals, that we're maintaining consistency with other parts of the Metro Plan, and really integrating all these pieces together with our current code so that it doesn't create any inconsistencies. It's a big package.
Okay. Sort of like a chicken and an egg question here. If we're doing all this related to that, can I assume then that the design and the whole project is already adopted, and that's why we're looking at the codes to implement it?
Wouldn't say you look at it as adopted, but I think what we want to do is kind of build on the process that's already occurred through the council's direction with the formation of the master plan, so to speak, that's come through that public process. In essence, think of it this way, that E-Web's an applicant with an application in front of you. They are proposing a specific vision for that site. Based on all the public testimony and the public process they went through, they've developed that vision. Your job, then, is to respond to that application that's before you, to say, okay, here's the vision that E-Web has. How does that stack up against our approval criteria that Gabe just mentioned in terms of consistency with statewide planning goals and Metro Plan policies and so forth? That's one piece. And then the other piece that I, that we are trying to emphasize, I think, we feel where you best can help the council, is to look at the Form-Based Code itself, because really, that's where the heart of this resides. How is that vision being carried out? And really, to me, at least the way I look at it, is the Form-Based Code is kind of the regulating plan, is really the primary tool that makes that vision become reality. And so if I were prioritizing kind of my work within all the different applications that are up there, to me, the Form-Based Code and the regulating plan that kind of is part of that is probably the most important piece. That's not to diminish the other issues, but that's where I think the most, I would look to the commission for the most time and effort spent is going to be in that area, if that helps.
Yeah, I guess my question was just sort of saying, I got confused because we're talking about the implementation of a vision, but we're not commenting on the vision.
Well, you'll
So that's what gets me confused.
Right, right.
And I, will we be doing that later, or is that something we won't do at all?
I think you will be commenting on the vision as you look at all the various approval criteria that are necessary for you to review as you send a recommendation to the council in a broad sense, in that they are consistent with, you know, as you look at this package, that you're finding that this package of amendments, which necessarily includes the code itself, is consistent with the Metro Plan, statewide planning goals, and those factors. What we're cautioning you on is not to step back and say, let's rethink the vision, because that's not your role. Your role is to respond to the vision that's kind of been put in front of you. So if that helps kind of clarify where the vision fits in that scheme of things. We'll talk more about it as we get closer to deliberations, too.
Because any change to the vision has all kinds of downstream ramifications as we go through the plan amendments and zone ordinance and, okay. Steve?
Couple things. One, although I don't think it's really required from a, required judicial standard, I did want to go on the record and state, I'm very familiar with the north end of the site because I worked on the design of the, as part of, I was working for the state, and I worked on, I was farmed out to E-Web's engineers to work on the design of the current headquarters buildings, had a substantial impact, and so I'm very familiar with some issues that came up then at the time and are, you know, and related to those buildings. I had a couple of questions related to the concurrent processes and potential conflicts, conflicts between the processes. For example, one I wanted to just check with, for example, I know that as part of the plan, there's this proposal to relocate the bike path and regrade part of the bank, so to speak. Now, obviously, that area is also within the Willamette Greenway zone, in the water resources zone. In other words, are there potential conflicts that would prevent, you know, significant regrading of that area because of the, in other words, even though it's part of the vision, you have a, you know, standards for the Willamette Greenway and so forth that would, you know, preclude or make it difficult to, you know, read, you know, do what's suggested or, you know?
I think one of the, one of the key aspects of this is the level of detail that E-Web's consultant team's gone through and evaluated as well, is looking at the need for a Greenway permit, making sure that we're not establishing any barriers that would prevent the concept from being implemented. And so we've actually created a custom set of standards for the park and open space area that not only facilitate those amenities, but actually require them in a fair amount of detail. So, you know, we've looked in a great amount of detail to make sure that it's feasible to implement the concept and really to go through in detail where and what needs to be implemented in terms of those improvements.
And one other question that, because you raised it about sustainability, too, I'm sure that Bill, you know, other architects are familiar with this. There's, the AIA has adopted, as I understand, a 2030 standard, which requires each decade the energy use has to be 10% better than the code. So in other words, did you consider as part of the regulatory standards, putting in So, in other words, did you consider as part of the regulatory standards, putting in place some sustainability standards that essentially had teeth? In other words, you know, buildings built in between 1020 and 10, 1010 and 1020 would have to be, I don't know what, I don't know, is it 20% better than code now, I think? Yeah, so it's 20%, and buildings built after 2030 would have 30% better than the current codes. In other words, did you consider that as part of the regulatory standards?
No, that's not included, but the comment that I made about sustainability really tracks back to the vision. And if I could, I'm going to answer Commissioner Jaworski's comment and yours at the same time. Council laid out the process for how a vision for this site would be developed, and that was put into the memorandum of understanding. And so the, what, how the vision was created is set. And this is, so this is not a visioning moment, this is a response to the proposal. The criteria that we put in place in the downtown plan, and then was codified into the land use code, does not get into that level of detail. So that would be something that would need to come really as a follow-up to the proposal. And really, we're not, it's a funny, fuzzy line between a proposal and a concept. We are not, there is not a specific proposal in front of us in terms of particular buildings that will be built. We are really just looking at the regulatory framework.
And so in terms of following up on your question about incorporating code requirements for sustainability, I'm hoping that the applicant's team will be able to bring more information forward as far as what was discussed in the master plan process, and how they grappled with that question. I can say that the code doesn't implement specific standards, say, for green billings, for lead, or anything like that. There are some, I think, very important concepts built into the code, though, that helped to facilitate a sustainable layout for the, you know, for the redevelopment of the property, expansion of the park area and the green space along the river, eco-routes, things like that, green infrastructure. So it's not that they haven't been considered, but I'd like the applicant's team hopefully to be able to give more detail on that.
Got myself in, John. Gabe, I'd like to ask you a couple of questions about the implementing of the zone itself, and the idea that you brought up about creating that balance between flexibility and certainty. Let's roll ahead a few years and assume that much of this is built out, and the property owner has a tenant who's leaving, and another tenant online to use the vacant space. And that particular tenant is not a specifically listed use, but one which the owner thinks is close enough to that, to fit the category? Is it up to the owner, then, just to let the new tenant in, or is there, will there be some sort of city review to determine whether it's close enough?
Well, we, of course, we have a process in place to try to verify whether a proposed use is, you know, actually fits with the zone. That won't change, but I think what is changing here, at least in the special area zone, is a much more generous approach to the categories of use. So for example, we wouldn't be looking at the difference between, say, a restaurant or a brewery, perhaps, but really there are sort of retail, service-oriented uses that fit within that category. The way the code works is it provides some examples, so one, you know, the user can understand what it is we're trying to allow in that area, but we're going to, I think it means less scrutiny when it comes to the particular elements of every-
Is that planning director makes that call?
It is.
Okay. Then, the other side of the coin that I'd like to ask you is there are definitely certain uses that are prohibited. If something comes up that isn't listed, that would not fit the public purpose, who makes that call to say, no, that's not the kind of use that we want in there as well?
Again, it's a, it's what I would call a zoning verification, where the planning director makes that call. It is an appealable decision, and so, you know, there is a set process, this won't change that.
Okay, good. John?
While I understand that we're not asked, being asked to approve the master plan, you state in the AIS, you stated today, that the Board of Commissioners unanimously approved this master plan. Is that true of the CAT as well?
It is.
I don't believe that the CAT was unanimous in their approval of the master plan. I think that there was some discussion about the amount of parks and open space. It was an overwhelming majority.
Well, as I understand it, and the way the applicant has presented it, the, there was-
Seven one.
It was seven one, so, I mean, the one member actually, I think, abstained from voting, but all the others were for approval.
Okay, are that, is that individuals' concerns available for us to see?
I'm sure we could provide some of that background. Again, I'll turn to the applicant's team to hopefully address that concern as we go forward to the public hearing. You know, I expect that if there is some dissent among the CAT members, or there's testimony to hear there, that they'll provide that.
Okay, again, I understand that it's not our role to approve the plan, but if indeed there are some concerns that are still relevant, I'd like to know about them. Thank you.
Bill?
As we look through this, as far as the form-based code aspects, and I'm assuming the transportation system standards and those sorts of things, when is it the time for us to bring up concerns or questions on, let's say, well, one thing I've noticed is I didn't really see any specifics on bike lanes on some of the connecting streets going into this area? If there's concerns about those lines, is now the time to bring that up? Is it once we get into deliberations, or will those things, I'm trying to make sure I get the process right?
Well, I appreciate you sharing some of that concern now. I mean, I think from a sort of factual standpoint, it's, and in terms of just getting the information, it's fair game to ask for that detail. Hopefully, we can provide more of it coming back to you in the, in the public hearing, and then depending on what we hear, what information we provide, you can then, of course, express those concerns in more detail when we get to deliberations.
Well, I'll bring that up now. As I look through this, I didn't really see any specifics on some of the street layouts going into this area from downtown, that either specifically addressed bike lanes, whether they're shared streets, or those sorts of things. And it seemed, I guess noticeably absent. We have a lot of the street design, the landscaping, the pedestrian access, but I didn't really see any bicycle connections, so that would be, that was just kind of a little-
We'll follow up on that.
Yeah, I'm going in. Steve? In Exhibit A, the downtown riverfront specific area plan, Gabe?
Yeah.
Maybe, I just went through this quickly the first time, but on page 23, there's a diagram, figure four dash three, build two lines, plus stepbacks and setbacks and stepbacks. And it shows in red there, the three to 10-foot setback zone, and it talks about that on the right-hand column there in the top paragraph, that on streets likely to have a more residential character, a setback at three to 10 feet allows for landscaping, et cetera. So taking that and going to page 17, diagram, or figure three dash two, the framework diagram that shows where those residential areas are, it doesn't look to me like the three to 10-foot setback matches the residential areas, and maybe I'm just missing something. But maybe you could scope that out and just verify, clarify that for me?
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, we'll do that.
Thanks. Steve?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions following up to what Bill said, too. One I mentioned, I guess it would be Exhibit B, page, a good page would be 19 and 20, where it talks about plantings, and shows some five-foot wide areas between the sidewalk and the street. Those are, those are usually very challenging to put a street tree in, that would, you know, as much, you know, a challenge. And then it shows some larger areas by the corners, and I'm wondering about transportation sightlines. Normally, there's limitations on putting trees too close to the corner, like street signs, because you can't, you block vision at the corner. So I'm concerned a little bit about the areas that looks to me like we're, the area where you would have the ability to put a tree, you might not be able to, because I don't see what the, you know, I don't see the dimensions for the sightlines to indicate whether that's the case or not. And also, just to mention a, an inconsistency, or something that I noticed early on, going back to Exhibit A, page 17, the page that Commissioner Lettich pointed out. The restaurant zone there shows, it broken up as three separate buildings, so there are view lines from the, the streets come, you know, the connecting streets come through. And yet, when we go back and look at, I can't remember which, maybe Exhibit E or F, well, I've got a sticker on it somewhere, you know, where it's showing the land use components and the zone-
Perhaps the regulating plan?
Yeah, the regulating plans would be, like, B, page five.
Right, so it shows the zoning over the footprint of that area.
Right.
What that regulating plan doesn't show is the detail of individual buildings. If you go further into the code, you'll see there are actually standards for the setbacks. I had a slide earlier that shows some of those requirements for the, for the boardwalk. Page 26 of the zone gives you a better idea of the sort of footprint for each of those buildings, the pass-through areas between the buildings, I mean, gives you a better form-based sense of the-
Okay.
... structure there.
I was confused that whether the pass-through was in the code or not.
It will be a requirement. There are detailed setbacks to require those, and really, the idea is also not just the pass-throughs, but to help establish a, you know, an opportunity for open seating areas next to the boardwalk and the park.
John Jaworski?
Yeah, Commissioner Randell brought up transportation, and I don't want to belabor the issue, but my initial question, I guess, was related to that. In doing the work that we're going to be doing here, which will be, let's say, extensive, can I assume then that under transportation, as an example, that the mitigating measures on Fourth and Eighth of Culberg and Hilliard are going to happen? Because if they're not, then the vision isn't a vision.
Yeah, so one of the, and I didn't talk about it much in my presentation, but one of the things that's required for this package is that, that the applicant provide a transportation planning rule analysis. And so you may have seen some of the fundamental mitigation requirements that they've identified. We expect those to be implemented through future process for traffic impact analysis. So I think it's helpful now to know in the concept and in the plan what those basic requirements are going to be. So like a dual right-turn lane on Culberg, signalized, and also a new at-grade railroad crossing. Again, we don't have the specific timing or the funding sources identified, but I think it's valuable to know what that mitigation's going to look like, what they'll need to make this functional. So I can't say that it's a, you know, a condition of approval at this point, but it really helps, I think, to understand the framework, that that's already been evaluated, and they've done the analysis needed to sort of bear that out.
No, I understand the analysis, I'm just saying, is someone saying they're actually going to come up with the funds to do that sometime in the future?
Right, and I-
Leave it to-
Yeah, I think that it, part of that depends on how this redevelopment process unfolds in terms of timing, but I do believe that we have the code provisions in place through TIA requirements to, to make sure that they're implemented when the time is right, when the need is there.
Bill?
Question, too, I guess, along similar lines, in noticing some of the bus routes and that, and the proposed, or I guess, dreamed bus routes through there. Has LTD been, the master planning, involved in?
LTD was included in conversation, as was the city's traffic engineer.
Yeah, back to me, and then Steve. Just a couple of, three questions, and if you don't know the answer now, I can get them later, but, and again, in Appendix A or Annex A, talking on page 14, talking about the framework and essential features of the plan, I just noticed a reference to saying "a new plaza," and I can't find it on Figure three dash one or somewhere else, so if you can, is there a new plaza, or is the current fountain area just going to be redone?
See if I can get to it here. Yeah, there's, what they're describing is a new Fifth Avenue Plaza area, and, you know, here's the existing plaza between the buildings. You can see an expanded-
Oh, okay.
-area here, where it's adjacent to the boardwalk. They've, they've described in the plan some water features and other-
Gotcha, okay, that's where it is.
Okay, that's not a parking area? I thought that was a parking-
No, pedestrian plaza.
Then, Gabe, on page 58, redevelopment scenarios, it talks about the base scenario accomplishes a new redevelopment of 250 units across 10 acres at a density of 25 units per acre. I'm just curious how 25 units per acre was determined to be the right fix?
So I'm going to, I'm going to follow up on that and try to get you some more information.
That one I really would like to know about, that's important to me on that. And then, let's see, I think, yeah, it's, now it's in Exhibit B, the downtown riverfront special area zone. In the diagrams on the streets, the illustrative diagrams, I noticed that the traffic lane widths are 10 feet. Is that fixed in concrete or asphalt? 10 feet is the width that's going to be adopted?
Well, again, I think as with any aspect of this proposed code and the plan, there's room for improvement potentially. It's a policy choice, it's sort of something to look at in more detail, but what I would say is that extensive work went into these cross-sections to make sure it's feasible, the traffic engineers evaluated it.
Is that what Broadway is? Is that what we're talking about, or is kind of slower lanes like that?
10 feet is what we're using for slower streets.
Yeah.
The streets that we want pedestrians to easily cross.
Yeah.
And to have them be small enough, and actually, the width be low enough, that cars feel like they have to go slower. So we are moving to 10-foot lanes in the number of-
Built-in traffic calming.
Yep. Okay, Steve?
I had another question in a different area, but I just wanted to follow up on something that Randy mentioned. The, in Broadway, you have alleys that provide access to trucks and so forth, and some other ways to get to things. It seems to me that it probably makes sense to take a look at this from a service standpoint, to make sure that, you know, because we don't have another set of infrastructure for servicing the buildings, that, that, that street width still works when you have a, you know, a grocery food truck trying to get to a restaurant. The other question I had, and I, and I have to, I've read through lots, lots and lots of this, and I didn't see a lot of attention paid to the railroad right-of-way as it abuts the area. And one of the things that I wanted to just check on, or have you make, obviously, there were some articles in the paper recently about the railroad, and one of the things they're considering is expanding, essentially adding another track to allow the freights to go by, which seems to me would probably end up affecting this area here, as well as through town. In other words, those freights are long, long freight trains. So just to make sure that we, you know, you, someone has touched base to make certain that this area might not need to expand in right-of-way because of that potential change, which obviously is considered to be, by the railroad development, you know, the transportation people involved in improving the railroads to the southern part of the Willamette Valley, that's considered a high priority. That bypass, higher than pretty much everything else in terms of being able to move trains through. So I just want to just put that on the radar. And also, just, it wasn't, maybe the design team can, it wasn't clear how the, that railroad, you know, would be, aside from the new crossing, how it would be treated, if it's considered, you know, just open like the other, some of other parts of the city where it's available, or is it fenced off so you can't, you know, get, in other words, just how would that be treated related to the district?
I want to respond briefly to that. One of the reasons that, one of the drivers behind the street network was predicated on where we had at-grade crossings. So we are assuming that those at-grade crossings will remain. We are looking at potentially relocating one to make it be a better pedestrian access. We're not assuming that those go away, but they would remain fully open to pedestrian crossing.
John?
Couple of things, follow up on what Steve just said. I understand there's a different process for developing railroad crossings, so that you don't have to have them whistle- you don't have to have them whistle stops? And I wonder if there's an opportunity to design these with that in mind, because they're new crossings, I assume.
Are you referencing the quiet zone?
Yes. There's infrastructure that has to be in place in order for it to happen.
Yes.
And I'm wondering if that could be considered now? So, even though we will still have the ones we have, at least we won't be adding new one. And the other one's a simple one, Gabe. Would you give us a link to your PowerPoint presentation today?
Absolutely. Glad to.
Back to me. On my first read-through, maybe I missed this, and unless I'm getting confused with another planning project I was involved with, it seems to me in the Walnut Station Plan, there was a provision, a requirement for a certain percentage of blazing on the buildings, and also a requirement for certain types of articulation. I didn't see that here in my first read-through, and either help me find where it is or tell me why it isn't there.
So, there are standards for articulation, window transparency, there are covered entries, building orientation, and I'll try to lead you to it here in the code. So, for each of the sub-districts, you know, the mixed use and then the active overlay and the people overlay, there are particular standards. I'm looking, starting at page 23 of the proposed code. There's where the code language details things like build-two lines, setbacks, building transparency, landscape. So, each sub-area has its own sort of custom set of standards that are trying to facilitate, you know, particular outcomes. And so, as you look through it, you'll see there's the MU/1 and the MU/2. Each of these sub-areas has its own set of details.
Okay. Steve?
Yeah, and actually, as long as, I was going to skip over this, but I just mentioned it, just, you know, we're involved in reviewing other plans like the South Walnut Plan. And it's interesting there that they're trying to get the buildings to pull back away from the build-two line. In other words, so there's a bit more flexibility, a place to put a, you know, bench, you know, a bench out in front of the building, or canopies, overhangs. In other words, to make a, sometimes to have a little bit more flex, you know? And I'm just, you know, just mentioned that here, we're doing just, we're doing the opposite, right? We're saying you've got to build to this line.
And I, yeah.
And so, I just, you know, it's like the different design community, it might be worthwhile just touching base to see if, you know, there, you know, if, you know, there's some meeting of the minds or whatever, if there's, you know, just so that, you know, we're doing something to try to improve mixed-use activities on South Walnut, and we're doing something here that we're trying to promote mixed-use, but are we putting in place a few things that, obviously, for some uses, it wouldn't be as crucial, but for maybe mixed-use, maybe you don't want to have to have them built quite to the build-two line? Maybe there's some modest setback that they could build within.
So, depending on the sub-area, there are build-two lines in certain portions of the site. There are variable setbacks in others. I think Commissioner Lettich pointed out, one area where, where you're looking at a primarily residential street front, there is some variability there. There's also some allowance for where there is additional setback, that pedestrian amenities are provided. So, you know, things like planners or benches or other things that help to activate the streetscape, those compensate for where a building might be placed farther back from the street. I think, you know, one of the key differences here is that we're looking at sort of a whole-claw redevelopment concept, whereas with South Walnut, you know, you're talking about an existing street within a right-of-way that's very limited. And so, that relationship is, I think, a lot more perhaps difficult to address than it is here where you have the opportunity to start from scratch.
I appreciate that. I just, I do want to make the note that even though the areas that you talk about is residential, you'd really like them to be multi, you know, multiple use. So, you'd like to have some other use on the lower floor, and then maybe multiple stories of residential above, just in terms of activating the area. So, again, you know, even in those areas, you know, and although there is design flexibility, the, these side streets are pretty narrow right now. All right. You know, the sidewalks are a little wider, but you've got a very narrow little tree spot, and then you've got a build-two line. So...
So, depending on the design concept for a given parcel, say, for redevelopment, you know, that's, I think, one of the key elements to reiterate here is the design review process. So, where there's a better solution, or perhaps there's a desire to create more setback with maybe hardscape and amenities and more space along the street, that's possible. We have a process that enables that. And so, I think that's a really important part of that balance that, you know, the plan describes, and the concept is really balancing certainty with some flexibility as well when conditions warrant it.
Jeff?
Yeah, Gabe, thanks very much, and I'll be very interested to have your PowerPoint also. I guess I wanted to go back to a couple of things that were mentioned. One was by Commissioner Randall about bike lanes and bike access to the area, making sure we have sufficient. We've got a lot of destination attractions here. We've got the river. We're going to have some services. We're going to have some retail. We're, you know, if we're successful, we're going to have a lot of people that are going to want to come here. And I guess I want to make sure they've got a place to park. And so, I'll be looking at that very closely as this plan develops. It'll be something I'll be looking hard at. So, that's just a heads up.
Appreciate that. We do have standards for bike parking, and I think one of the things that we should probably look at is whether or not there are some more sort of public or right-of-way opportunities to provide shared parking beyond what individual redevelopment might do.
So... I'm also talking about car parking. And, you know, we have on-street, I presume there's going to be on-street parking here in this area, but if we've got some nice restaurants in the area, some cool retail, some of us can't pedal there, some of us don't have access to bus, so we're going to need to be able to drive there, too. So, that's a key element I'll be looking for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One final comment from me. When we were doing the Walnut Station, I was really keen on the form-based code, and this is a hybrid. And what I generally like about them is that it creates parameters so that we have a lot of aesthetic harmony, I guess you could call it. But what I'm always, what I've always been also interested in is how much license it still allows for architects to do their own thing within those parameters. And I'm wondering, were other architects, other than the consulting architects, involved in this? I'm kind of wondering what the acid test is. If Bill feels he's got enough liberty and some like this...
I'm almost certain, given the robustness of the public process, that there were other architects involved, or at least providing some comment. But I'll look to Nan and the applicant's team for that.
Yes. Okay. Thanks. Any other comments, folks, for Gabe? So, Steve?
Just one, did not, just, you know, I didn't ever see a list of the members of the CAT team.
Oh, yeah.
And I just, you know...
Actually, it's the beginning of the special area plan there.
Yeah. Okay. Page three, they, okay.
Anything else? Okay. So, public hearing is set for Tuesday, February 5th. Six o'clock, exit room in the library?
Yes.
All right. Any other comments, Steve, Gabe, man? Good. Okay. Thanks very much. Look forward to the hearing.
Thank you for your time.
Okay. Item three, items from commission staff. Steve, any comments?
Nothing for me.
Items from members of the commission. Just before that hearing, though, we do have a meeting next Monday, 11:30, right here. Vision Eugene Transportation, is that what it is?
I believe that's correct.
Okay.
Yes.
John?
There's an item in that listing. How are we doing? Take the time.
Oh, we do have time, yeah. Good point. How are we doing?
Specific today, I think we got a lot of information and a lot of opportunity to raise our concerns. Of course, this is a work in progress, so I can't say how we've done, but so far, I think we're doing okay.
How about our processes on, I guess, any of the appeals or remands that we've been dealing with? Everybody seems to be happy.
They have to try it on precise again soon, so...
Yeah. Lunch, lunch, good for everybody.
I think, I think having the specifics laid out ahead of time for us on, you know, what the issues really are and what we really need to go with, what we need, just sort of, you know, what we really need to deal with. And so, I would say that's working well.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, then, we'll use, we'll save a half-hour reserve time for a future date. This meeting is adjourned.